Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Environment Housing and Community Scrutiny Board for June. Apologies for the late start. We expect to be concluding this meeting around about half past 12 to one o'clock, depending upon the length of our discussion. First of all, I will go round the room to introduce the members of our scrutiny board. And I'll introduce myself first of all. I'm Stuart Galton. I'm councillor for Rothwell Ward and I am Chair of the meeting.
Good morning, councillor for Headingly High Park, Abdul Hanan.
I'm councillor Jane Dowson, councillor for Chapelall and Ward, and I'm actually new to this board.
Councillor Kate Hague, Farnley and Wiltley Ward.
Good morning, folks. Councillor Adrian McClosky, Farnley and Wiltley Ward.
Luke Farley, Labour representative for Bermondsoft and Richmond Hill.
Good morning, everyone. Constance Shaffali from Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Annie Maloney, also Beeston and Holbeck Ward.
Morning. Lou Cunningham, Green councillor for Armley Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Simon Searay for the Putsey Ward.
Good morning. Norma Harrington for Wetherby Ward.
And to introduce the important people supporting our work today.
Hello. Becky Atherton, scrutiny adviser to the board.
Thank you very much. First of all, a very warm welcome to councillor Dowson, who is the new member to our board. That, of course, means that the rest of the people on the board are now officially veterans and will be expected to offer that level of length of service in their insight into what we're discussing today. However, just for those people watching, councillor Dowson has a long pedigree on the council and has been a Lord Mayor of the city, so she has been able to have direct reference to communities in every part of our very large and wonderful city. Right, so let's go on to our items on the agenda. First of all, there are the formal items. Item one, terms of reference.
Shall we start with appeals, Chair?
We'll start with appeals then.
Item one, appeals. There are no appeals against refusión of inspection documents today. Chair, do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Item two, there are no items excluded from the public domain. Item three, there are no late items. Items four, can I ask members to disclose any interests in accordance with the council's code of conduct? I'll take silence as none. And then item five, apologies. Apologies have been received from councillor Barry Anderson and councillor Searay is attending as a substitute. And councillor Jess Lennox has just asked me to note that she will be a little bit late to the meeting but will be attending later on in the session.
Thanks very much, Becky. Can we have a look at the minutes? Do we have any comments on the minutes? I will add a comment. I have had a meeting with the communities team to discuss reporting back in September on progress made with departments to discuss accountability and delegated functions as part of our community committee's review. So we'll be able to feedback further on that at a later meeting. Other than that, can we assume that the minutes are correct? Can someone propose? Councillor Hague? Thank you. I'm seconded by councillor McClosky. Thanks very much. Right, let's move on to the next item, which is our terms of reference. Each year, of course, we refresh our terms of reference, but they look very much like what they did the year previously because we have the same remit of authority to look at the same parts of council function. Do we have any comments on the terms of reference? Okay, thanks very much. On to the next one. We have co-opted members. This is an item which offers the board the option to look at the co-option of non-elected members in a non-voting capacity in a permanent relationship with the board. Is there anybody who would like to suggest that at this meeting? Okay, thank you very much. That item is concluded. So let's go forward to our first item of business, and that is the performance monitoring report. Can I say, this is a fundamental paper in terms of those as a scrutiny board fulfilling our function in oversight of the council delivering council services, but in particular also it's a great opportunity for us to discuss with those frontline services to identify areas where we can work together, looking at a particular area in detail to create something even better at the end of it during our year as of scrutiny. So we are very welcome and very grateful that there are a lot of high-ranking people here to talk to us today about the areas of performance for their services, and we look forward to a robust discussion going forward. Just to highlight what we're going to do in that discussion, we're going to look at the different areas in the performance report, and we are going to be discussing areas around waste at the end of the discussion, after we've exhausted areas other than that, so that our discussion can be equally dispersed in terms of making sure that we cover all our areas of interest. So, in the first instance, I will ask for those people present who are reporting to this paper to introduce themselves and what their title is, please. Starting with councillor Rafik.
Yeah, councillor Mohamed Rafik. I'm the exec board member for climate, energy, environment and green spaces.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Mary Harland, representing Kipkisson Metley, an exec board member with responsibility for communities, community safety and customer service.
Good morning. Polly Kirk, I'm the Chief Officer for climate, energy and green spaces.
Morning, everybody. Lee Hemsworth, Chief Officer for community hubs, welfare and business support.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Robert Goh. I'm the Deputy Head of All Vastic Management, Housing Leeds.
Morning, everyone. Mandy Sawyer, Head of Housing and Neighbourhood Services in Housing Leeds.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kerry Murray, Head of Homelessness Services.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Ian Strickland, Business Development Manager, and I'm the author of this report.
Good morning. My name's John Woolmer. I'm the Chief Officer for Environmental Services.
Good morning. Jonathan Mitne, Chief Inspector, Strategic Partnerships, West Yorkshire, please.
Morning, everybody. Paul Money, Chief Officer, Save for Stronger Communities.
Morning, all. James Rogers, Director of Communities, Housing and Environment.
Thank you very much. You're all welcome. First of all, can I say to Ian Strickland, all of the members are really appreciative of the very well-laid-out format of the report, which has made it much easier for us to digest the information available within it. So thank you very much. I'll now ask for a very brief introduction from James Rogers.
Chair, what we're proposing to do is to go through the different themes, and the relevant chief officer will introduce the key points of each theme, and then that will allow members to ask any particular questions.
Thank you for that excellent brief introduction, so that we can go straight into the meat of the discussion. So first of all, we're going to look at our commitments around zero carbon and climate emergency, which of course is the area that Polly Cook looks after. Do members have any questions around the information provided in the report? Whilst you're perusing that, Polly will offer a few words of introduction to the areas that we've identified in here.
So there's two key performance indicators for this. One is about the council's own emissions, and since 2005 we've achieved 64% reduction in emissions. There's four key areas that we look at. So street lighting, we look at separately, just because it's such a large chunk of our electricity bill. Buildings, we look at in two different ways. We look at heat and electricity. And then fleet is the final bit of the jigsaw that we consider. Last year was slightly strange because the way that we do it, we look at the energy consumption. So we look at kilowatt-hours or megawatt-hours that the council uses. So if we go back to sort of the exec board report, we can see on our gas and electric, we have seen a reduction in that year-on-year. What we actually saw last year was a slight increase in carbon emissions linked to electricity. So although the council have done everything in its control to reduce electricity and to do what we should be doing, what happened at a national level was the grid mix was different, and that was just to do with the climate conditions and weather last year. But actually, the key indicator is the fact that we are reducing down our consumption year-on-year. And then just around the tree planting, we planted 53,000 trees last year, and then of kind of whips, and 174 standards. And that continues to be challenging in terms of finding suitable land to plant on and going through that process. We've done a lot of work around establishment and making sure everything that's been planted to date is well-established, and we're getting to a good position where a lot of our older woodlands are now starting to do really well. This year will be a worry in terms of the climate that we're seeing and the heat, and there's going to have to be some extra work.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hague?
Thank you. I've got two questions. Firstly, on emissions, some of our consumption is through Leeds pipes, and do we have a way of understanding what the impact of using Leeds pipes is on that target? And secondly, I seem to recall that we recently had a review of how we are identifying areas for planting trees, and is that likely to be able to help us to achieve that target?
So in terms of Leeds pipes, it has two different roles. So it contributes on a city level, in terms of the city's emissions, as well as to the council, this building is heated by Leeds pipes. Overall, it saves us about 7,000 tonnes of carbon a year, and obviously the plan is for that to continue to expand. What I can't say is the specific contribution for these buildings, but I could come back to you with that data, I just don't have it to hand. So it heats about five of our buildings specifically. In terms of the way we identify land, so we have members of the public have the opportunity to identify bits of land, and the service then check in terms of service checks and making sure that they're technically suitable, and do that consultation with ward members about whether actually they're acceptable, and then go back out to kind of flag those sites. It's still challenging, and a lot of the bits of land that get put forward are quite small, which then means it's very, very difficult for the team because they're managing so many multiple sites in terms of consultation. But obviously, it's helpful because it's bits of land that the public are identifying.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Polly. I think I've asked in a couple of the previous scrutinies for an updated actual figure on the percentage of survival of the woodland creation whips, and linked into that an updated ward-based canopy cover map. So that's one question. And then I'm also interested to know about any initiatives that Leeds are currently involved with around carbon capture.
Okay. So the survival rate, I can come back to you with, with the percentage. In terms of the canopy cover, that I can't come back to you with because we did the canopy cover right at the beginning, and it was a really big piece of work with the Bank of Carbon, where we had researchers come out and do that. So we can do sort of number of trees planted in specific areas but not canopy cover. So whether that would be sufficient to say what's happened in your specific ward. So over the time since we started planting, we can certainly break down all the tree planting schemes that have happened in different areas, but the canopy cover is slightly different. In terms of carbon capture, there isn't anything that we are specifically involved in at the minute, so.
Thank you. Councillor Dowson.
Firstly, I want to, through this body, to thank all the staff who work in our parks. I go to many of them because I actually support councillor Rafik with parks, and they're doing an excellent job despite very difficult climate circumstances. But the questions are, you said 64% reduction in our carbon, is that on target for us, 64%? That's just question one. Do you want me to go through all of them? Yeah. I go past Gare Wood nearly every day on my way in, which is an initiative by Leeds University, planting and extending the forest. But are there any initiatives that you know of, bearing in mind the council are now running out of land, of which to put forests and woods and extend our woodland? Are there any local or national initiatives that we can be working with to try and encourage private landowners to come forward to plant trees? The other one going forward that concerns me, we're planting lots and lots of trees. There's lots and lots of lovely woodland for people to enjoy. Have we enough tree officers? Or going forward, what are your plans to make sure we have enough tree officers to make sure that they are actually healthy and safe environments for members of the public? Thank you.
So if you go back to the exec board report, there's a graph that shows the emission reduction in line each year, and if you do sort of a straight line, it shows that it's on target. There are elements within the four sections that are more challenging. So we know nationally what the ambition is around clean power, so we will obviously benefit from that being achieved because our electricity will substantially drop. With gas, we have to move all our buildings off gas in order to hit that, and we've done a lot of our high hitters, so we're still working through that. And then fleet, again, we have started, some of the bigger fleet is more challenging. So there are going to be challenges in terms of delivering that because the technology's not quite there, and also the kind of equivalence in terms of cost and cost savings. In terms of your other questions about sort of local and national initiatives, so we work as part of the White Rose Forest, and the White Rose Forest is doing a lot of work with private landlords and how we can engage better. So we're trying to use that mechanism to operate. Some of it has been around uncertainty around government policy in terms of what benefits people can get from the way that they use their land, and hopefully there will be a bit more clarity on that, and then it will be easier to move forward on it. In terms of tree officers, I suppose one thing I would say is a lot of the trees that are being planted aren't in the kind of higher-risk areas, so they're not the sort of street trees that, you know, obviously have that higher footfall. So we do, in terms of our parks, we do Level One tree inspections. All of those will be captured through that anyway, so we've got those processes in place. Highways do the inspection on the road, and we've had additional capital in terms of doing tree management to make sure that we are on the right foot.
Councillor Dowson.
Just to come back quickly on street trees. Lots of us represent areas where there aren't many public parks, and Leeds do really well. I think we have one of the best cities in the country for the amount of green space we have within our city. But in some of our areas, there are very few trees and green spaces, and we know for a fact that, you know, there's tree pits that aren't filled anymore, they're just tarmacled over, that potentially could be reused. But the rules and regulations have changed, I understand, and you now have to have cells so the roots don't disturb... So two questions. Number one, are we looking at initiatives to plant more street trees? Are we working with Section 106, whatever the funding is we get in, to try and encourage some of that money to be spent on much-needed street trees in urban environments? And secondly, the existing tree pits that can't take trees anymore do still have a capacity to have something in them that's appropriate, shrubs or planting. Are we looking at opening up potentially tree pits that have been just tarmacled and bricked over to make sure they have an opportunity to thrive and put green spaces into these urban environments? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Dowson. I think this is a good point for me to bring up my own query as a board member. You refer at the bottom of your report around woodland creation about the Trees for Streets initiative, which was the council's chosen conduit to deliver street trees within the city. However, the programme closed due to the number of tree requests, which the council itself ruled out because the highway section of the council determined that there was a potential to disrupt undertakings. Have we learnt from that process? And following councillor Dowson's question, are we considering a different model for delivery of street trees?
So let's start with councillor Dowson's questions first about planting more street trees in Section 106. We'd always work with ward councillors, so, I mean, in terms of the Section 106 funding, we've got, sometimes it's allocated to specific parks or specific schemes, but we work with ward councillors about actually how do they want to use their Section 106. So, you know, I'm happy to ask the team to flag that as an option. Like councillor Galton's just said, it can be really challenging because of the number of things we've now got going under our streets, which is significantly more than maybe when trees were originally planted with all the IT and cable infrastructure. So in terms of sort of the lessons learned, you know, I think we've learnt the sort of process and how we get through it quicker, but we came to the conclusion that working under the Trees for Street Brown wasn't really working in our favour. I mean, actually, we're better just to incorporate it all into our woodland creation and have it as one joined-up scenario, because we've got a set of tree officers who are doing that kind of checking work anyway. So it's not that we're not doing trees on streets now, it's just that we are doing them in a more joined-up way and under our own kind of steam as opposed to relying on another organisation. In terms of the existing tree pits, that would be really challenging because obviously if we were to put things like shrubs in, unless we've got a commitment from somebody else to maintain them, we don't have additional resource at the moment, we don't have spare capacity to take on any additional maintenance. We'd have to pay our grounds maintenance contract, and in the light of the current financial situation, anything that increased costs is tricky unless, like I say, another group or something was prepared to adopt them and take that on, in which case we'd look at it and consider it.
Thank you. Councillor Farley.
Sorry, just adjusting my microphone. Okay, yeah, so you touched on this slightly earlier, obviously we need to reduce our energy consumption, reduce our gas. As I'm sure you are aware, the government has outlined plans around adding more solar panels to public buildings. What may I ask is the council doing with respect to increasing the number of panels on buildings and any other, any other sort of like energy generation across council facilities? Yeah, I'll leave that there. Thank you.
So we have a scheme called Public Set to Decarbonisation Scheme that I think we've got just over £50 million worth of over the last two to three years. And what that does is it allows us to take buildings off gas, but what we also do at the same time is we compensate the additional demand for electricity through adding solar. So if you were to go and look at John Charles, I think we're on probably about our third round of adding solar to that, he's our biggest energy consumer. Most of our leisure centres now have solar panels. We've done a lot through primary schools, and again, we always, if we put air-source heat pumps in, we always accompany that with solar panels. There's also been some recent funding through the West Yorkshire Combined Authority for solar panels, that again, we've put in a bid for in order to secure that. We've also secured an additional round of funding through Public Set to Decarbonisation that will be looking at another set of our buildings, including the Arium, which is our plant nursery, which again, is a higher energy consumer. So we'll be at the point where most building, our bigger energy consumers, will have solar panels. The ones that we haven't done tend to be more the city centre ones, partly because of the kind of listed and heritage status that they are kind of more challenging to do. But even Temple Newsom, we've managed to find a way to put solar panels on buildings within Temple Newsom, and we're hopeful we're going to do something similar to Lotherton quite soon. So there is a continued programme, but obviously, and we did look at Solar Farm, we did quite a lot of work exploring that, but at the time, the issue was the grid connection wasn't available until, I think, 2038. So at that time, there's a lot of work going on at a national level to try and sort out some of those systemic issues that were stopping that. So that's something we may come back to revisit, and obviously that work's not lost. We've got all the work that we did to get there, so that might also come back.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And it's obviously, it's disappointing that the national grid literally can't take more solar capacity. I suppose that's a condemnation of kind of privatising the system and not investing in it. This perhaps is, the first part of this is perhaps more of a question for housing colleagues, but are we looking at the application of solar panels to new build council properties? And related, but not necessarily on the same theme, do we have a local procurement process for sourcing any new solar panels or efforts to kind of reduce our energy consumption?
Terms of housing, I'm looking down the table to see.
I think I've just not voted, so apologies for that. Yeah, a real brief update if I can, and it might add limited value, but we do work with the service, with the council housing growth team, and constantly looking at the energy strategy. So I guess we're focusing primarily at the moment on the heating source and renewables such as ground source heat pumps, but those individual schemes where it's appropriate to add solar in, we will do, but I guess kind of like working on a case-by-case basis at the moment.
Can I ask in an associated question? When we do do these kind of investments around photovoltaics and ground source heat pumps, does that come directly out of housing revenue account funds, or is it sourced through alternative funds?
I'm not sure I can answer that one. Oh, you can, Polly, sorry.
So for a lot of the schemes we've done, we have had social housing decarbonisation fund, and then housing will match fund it through the HRA. But obviously, they would have had to have done something anyway in terms of modernising heating systems, so the match fund would have been what they would have spent, but it allows us to go further by using some of the supplementary grant funding. Can I just come back on the new housing? So I think we can come back with a definitive position, but my understanding is that the new council housing will have an element of solar on, but I will just get that absolutely confirmed because it's not my area of expertise, but through planning and things, I would expect that to happen. And just one other thing on that. I've just started conversations with Octopus Energy, and they've come up with a new scheme about sort of social housing, private rented, about having solar panels and the owner of the property being out of benefit and the tenant being out of benefit. I don't know any more details yet, but we are going to explore that conversation to see if there's any potential and anything we should be promoting locally. In terms of the local procurement, we tend to, with the public set decarbonisation, it tends to be quite a large scheme, and we've done it where the company that we've worked with does all the design and everything at risk for us. So if we don't secure the funding, we haven't paid for it. And so we haven't done that locally. We have sometimes used local solar suppliers through their supply chain, but that just allows us to do it a low-risk way, and because quite often the funding comes through quite late and we don't know what we can bid for, we have to be pretty nimble in the way that we react so we don't miss out on opportunities.
Thank you. Councillor McClosky, and this will be the last question on the environment, because if you want to have any more discussion, we can look at it through our work programme. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. I think you've probably picked up, I was going to focus in on housing. In terms of our existing stock of council houses, how are we in terms of programme to update those into heating, insulation, et cetera? And new housing, which hopefully we do very well in Leeds, what are we doing to ensure that they are the lowest carbon units being developed? Thank you.
Yeah, if I can, we, last year, or the back end of this year, we successfully bid on funding through the Warm Homes grant schemes. So we managed to attract £13 million's worth of funding that we have to match fund, so essentially. million's worth of funding that's, that we have to, we have to match fund, so essentially up until 2028, we'll, we'll deliver, we'll deliver £28 million through, through that programme and I guess it's tackling worst first with the aim to, to bring housing up to, up to Satbannonsey.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our next area and we're going to look at the section entitled Keeping Our Communities Safe. The first area for discussion is food safety. I have a question on this, if that's all right. I noticed that it points out that most food establishments, around about 95% or so, are considered good or excellent. I was wanting to understand whether that was a percentage of the total number of food outlets in the city or is that a percentage of the number of outlets that, which are inspected each year? And therefore, are we still doing the same number of inspections as we have done in previous years? Who can answer that?
Chair, was that related to food safety inspections?
Yes.
So, just, just repeat the, the specifics of the question.
So, the data that we have in front of us, in terms of performance monitoring, says that, I think, if I remember rightly, because I'm not looking at it directly, around about 90% plus of establishments are considered good or excellent as part of our inspection regime. I was wanting to understand whether that was the percentage of the total number of food outlets in the city or whether that was a percentage of the number of inspections which are carried out annually. And then secondly, it was how many inspections are we carrying out annually and is that less than we were delivering previously?
In terms of the second question, I don't have the detail in front of me, but I can confirm that we are carrying out more inspections than we have done previously, because we're doing increased work around food inspections. On the first one, I'll have to get the detail to confirm which of those it is in terms of answering that specifically.
Thank you very much. That was page 44 by the way, right at the bottom in case anyone's looking for it. So, we'll move on now to the antisocial behaviour aspect of our performance monitoring report. Do we have any questions from members of the board? And would we like to have an introduction on that area whilst they're looking at the specific data from Paul Monner? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The relevant areas within the performance monitoring report for my service do include antisocial behaviour, also includes domestic violence and abuse and also hate crime, as I'm sure you've, you've picked up. And due to the nature of the type of work we do in partnership, as you've seen today, I'm really pleased that Chief Inspector John McNiff from Leeds Police, who leads on partnerships, is, is, is joining us, which is helpful because this is how we, we approach all of these particular issues. In terms of antisocial behaviour and the other areas, what we've sought to do in the report is to provide some high level statistical information in terms of year on year volumes and demands, but then qualify that a little bit further within each relevant section with more qualitative information really in relation to how we're approaching tackling these types of issues, which are all familiar with, and also some of the more recent, I guess, certainly in the last 12 months initiatives, seeking to outline both the progress that we've made, but also recognise the, the challenges in areas such as this. So, I hope that's sufficient by way of introduction, councillor Goldton.
Thank you very much, councillor Hague.
Thank you. I think we're all aware that antisocial behaviour does not happen in isolation and there's often an need for other services to be involved. Could you talk a bit about how the antisocial behaviour team works with housing, the police, youth services and any safeguarding that's required? Because I think it would be really helpful for the board to understand how that links in, you know, it's not just handed off because one service is dealing with it, other services are not, you know, following through with their responsibilities.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that question councillor Hague and it, it does strike at a key point, as you've said, in relation to often there are interrelated issues playing out in terms of a term as broad as antisocial behaviour, especially safeguarding, the, the one you highlight. I think the kind of track record for the council in terms of focusing on this in the, in the comprehensive way, both in terms of partnership working and addressing key underlying issues, i- is good. I think the development some years ago now of the Leeds Antisocial Behaviour Unit, Lasbat as is commonly referred to, and the fact that that service works in such an integrated way with all the services and others that you've referenced there, including housing. It does have police officers embedded, embedded within it and has for a while and I'm pleased to say that that service has been protected in, in spite of some significant challenges financially, as, as you'll know. Specifically to your point though, about how do we actually practically address the, those underlying issues and identify things such as safeguarding matters, that relates to us introducing a few years ago now, a antisocial behaviour triage capability, so that no matter where in the council antisocial behaviour is reported, and as you'll appreciate, it's, it's reported in all sorts of different ways, including to elected members. What we do is we, we, we take that particular instance through a triage process. There's an assessment that we work to called Thrive, we stole it with pride from the police, but it looks at a number of different factors and often does actually identify off the back of what might seem like a fairly routine, dare I say it, not routine for victims, but a routine volume ASB issue, that underneath that, there are significant safeguarding issues. And what we do from the triage is we ensure that the appropriate inquiries are directed to the appropriate service, but that we retain ownership of all of that as we kind of move forwards. Often, some of these cases are super complex, super difficult. If we can, if we can work through a mediation route, that's what we'll try to do in the first instance, but often it requires fairly high level enforcement interventions and we've got capabilities detailed in the performance reports, such as the Leodas team for instance, that are at the other end of the spectrum in terms of looking at all the available civil and criminal sort of legislative opportunities that we might have to address a victim's antisocial behaviour and any other issues that might be alongside that. Hope that's some answer, councillor, to your, to your question.
Thank you councillor Hague. Any further questions? Can I raise one please, which comes up a lot at things like community committee meetings, where we have officers attend to talk about crime and, and areas like that. And one of the things that comes up continually are two areas. One is vehicle related antisocial behaviour, which is referred to in the paper on page 46, where there was a PSPO in place. And the other one is around youth based antisocial behaviour, particularly associated with youths in large numbers as opposed to youths in singularity. And I think it would be useful to potentially get an understanding of the full process in tackling these difficult to respond to areas. One, because of the use of balaclavas in terms of being able to positively identify people. And secondly, of course, around children being children and therefore, besides being perpetrators, are also vulnerable individuals in terms of our responsibility to them as responsible adults. So, I think that would be a useful area for discussion, an introduction at this stage, but it might also be something that you might want to consider having a conversation with us at a later date in terms of seeing what we can do in the city to understand the wider picture of where it's happening, how we respond and how each agency is able to support each other in fulfilling what they need to do, if I'm not being too abstract. Councillor Dowson.
I am new to this committee, so please forgive me if this isn't, isn't relevant to this, because this report is, there's so many important issues, antisocial behaviour, domestic violence and so on and so forth. This might seem quite trivial, but there's, there's, it seems to be a bit of a scourge at the moment of electric bikes driving on footpaths, especially delivery bikes and so on, but they are dangerous. They, they go a fair old lick and it'll only take them to hit one person and, and kill them. But there's no way of identifying these bikes and I'm just wondering whether Leeds City Council is, is thinking of or whether they can actually work up some kind of system whereby that they've got licence plates or they're registered or there's some way of identifying the ones that are actually driving on the footpaths, that are actually putting the reputation of all the drivers who, who are responsible and stay on the roads, they're putting their livelihoods at, at risk.
Councillor Hannan, was your comment along the same issue?
No, it was a separate one.
I'll come to you later on then. Paul or Chief, sorry, was it Inspector McNiff now?
Chief.
Chief Inspector?
Chief Inspector McNiff.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe, John, if I, if I start. I think three, three key, key issues in terms of the, the broad sort of themes that we look at from an antisocial behaviour perspective, and, and each in their own way, do create that, that more complex challenge, councillor Goldton, that you kind of alluded to there. Just firstly to say that where we have issues, such as the three that have been talked about there, the motor vehicle ASB, the youth related issues in certain circumstances and the, I was going to say emergence of the electric bikes, but it's not really the emergence anymore. I think we, we're seeing it proliferate in most of our communities and especially in the city centre where there is some significant footfall and risks, I think there. We do have, have an approach to all those three things. I think it would be fair to say that that approach is evolving and I think it would also be fair to say that there's probably scope for legislative drafting and support around some of this, especially in relation to the electric bike issue, but we're responding to it with the, with the kind of powers that we've, we've got. These types of things are kind of looked at from a governance point of view in a strategic board, an antisocial behaviour board that has representatives on from across the partnership because of the nature of them and reports into the Safer Leeds Executive and does feature on our annual report that, that does come to this, this scrutiny board and will do in, in the next few months. And in addition, we've looked at these three things again, as we have looked to redraft our new antisocial behaviour strategy, which again, we were supported with at scrutiny a few months ago with regards to the direction of travel. I think there's more, more travelling to do on, on these issues, but just to unpick if I can, firstly, the antisocial behaviour associated with motor vehicle use. It is pretty much, as you describe councillor Goldton, it is pretty much across all our communities to a lesser or greater degree. And as such, we've, we've looked to develop enhanced ways of responding to the issue because of the nature of the challenge police officers experience with regards to the Road Traffic Act legislation, which is the primary, primary legislation that we would ordinarily look to for antisocial motor vehicle use on the highway. That legislation's not especially helpful in some areas, because as you rightly say, it's about being found committing and it's about identifying and often, as you've said, that the individuals involved in this type of thing wear face coverings and that type of thing. That's why we developed the citywide public space protection order, because that gives us and the police additional powers to be more proactive or to be able to be more proactive in terms of responding to intelligence about individuals who might be involved in this type of issue. We do, we do work very closely with the police when we have intelligence about things like car meets and car gatherings. I can't think of an occasion when we haven't been supported by the police who've attended and dealt with the, the issues that, that have been there, often with specialist resources. We have, through our council working arrangements and working closely with elected members, sought to use any additional available funding to assist with things like the stop devices, commonly referred to as stingers, to provide the police with additional capacity and capability around that. And we are really keen to continue to work with local communities, often blighted by this particular problem, with regards to having confidence to report to us any community information that might help identify who's involved. Often, it's very local, individuals in local areas, not always, but often is the case. And we'll be committed to responding to that information as appropriately as we could. I'll pause there, councillor Goldton, on that issue and maybe invite Chief Inspector McNiff to add anything else before coming back to the other points that have been raised, if, if that's okay with you.
Yes, thanks. Can I bring in councillor Hague first to add a question? Oh, sorry, it's not on that subject. Councillor Farley, was yours a question on this subject?
It relates to the, slightly relates to the bike.
Do you want to come in at this point?
Yeah, so just, just following on from councillor Dowson's point with, with regards to the bikes and e-bikes, we, we've obviously had very, we've had a very successful police operation over the past few years. Operation Diesel Crescent has tackled antisocial use of, of crossers and electronic crossers. I, I, you know, I, I suppose that, you know, it's more of a question for the police, but is there, is there the opportunity to look at sort of council-police partnership around tackling antisocial use of e-bikes? You know, just, just one example from my own world, we had a very successful Bermitoff's Communities Festival on Saturday, we had about three and a half thousand people there. Somebody on an e-bike, probably involved with drug dealing, hit a child, a five-year-old child. The child had, I think it was a broken leg, but it could have been much worse. Fortunately, we had about half of East Leeds Police on the scene almost immediately, which, you know, was, was helpful. And they've obviously been working with, with the council using, using CCTV and whatnot. But is, is there, is there an opportunity to look at police and council operations, perhaps just in specific locations to start with, city centre, inner, inner city wards, and then look at how we can roll that out? Because it is, it's, it's a danger and as councillor Dowson said, like, people have been killed and more people could be killed.
Chief Inspector McNiff.
Thank you. Yes, you're absolutely right councillor, it is a, is a real concern. In terms of the wider question, there's a couple of themes really, which is the first, I think, point that I'd really want to reference is that everything that we do is done in partnership. Our individual organisations will pull from that, our, our specific tactics and our ability to influence, which clearly around, from the policing perspective, is around arrested, detaining and arresting people, that investigation and, and the powers that we've got through the relevant legislation. Intelligence really is key on this, as has been mentioned, because without wanting to sort of give too many of our tactics away, people do talk, we pick up on that information, that allows us to put our resources in place. Clearly, we've got a neighbourhood footprint in every area of Leeds. We've also continued our investment into the off-road motorcycle team who are really useful in this area, because they've got a good understanding and appreciation and the ability to use certain tactics to, to deter and, and detain those that are responsible. And that actually then goes further, we work, as Paul said, that is largely a local issue in local people, but actually more recently, we have seen a change, a development where people regionally are coming into areas of Leeds as well. So, we're working with our Safer Roads and Neighbourhoods policing teams, our road policing teams are working really closely with other police forces as well to make sure that their disruption doesn't then defer into, into West Yorkshire and Leeds and then we see those problems here as well. So, yeah, absolutely, as has been referenced.
So yeah, absolutely, as has been referenced, there's a lot of work that we're doing with to educate people and to mount operations in areas of high footfall such as city centre around e-bikes specifically. And we're working really closely with some of those organisations, fast food outlets and the like, that are actually employing people on bikes to make sure that they're effectively being, that they've got a good knowledge of the legislation, that there's been a good neighbour around this. There are still challenges, there is still more to be done certainly, but please be reassured that we're acutely aware and doing what we can.
Thank you. I think this is an area that we might want to have a closer look at as a board. councillor Dowson, did you want to come in on that?
I am assured you're acutely aware of it. However, I saw an incident this morning, how do I report it? Because there's no identification, apart from the fact that somebody has a big box on their back that says Uber, as do hundreds of other bikes in the city. So without being, members of the public who witness incidents being able to report them, then I cannot understand how we can move this forward. Your knowledge is great, the fact you're working with all these different organisations, but even they won't be able to identify individuals if there's no way of identifying them.
No, you're absolutely right. And this isn't around, this isn't around an individual necessarily on a bike on that occasion in that place, we're actually looking at it sort of more widely globally, if you like, around Leeds, because you're right, once that person on that bike with no identification number has gone whizzed past somebody and there's been that danger caused, the likelihood of us being able to identify that individual person is really difficult. But what I would urge anybody to do is please keep talking to us. We've got a partnership intelligence cell that works closely, that's embedded within Safer Leeds and West Yorkshire Police, that looks at all of these reports and that then, as you'll be aware through your continual tasking arrangements, looks at these issues and then is able to go to whichever company it happens to be and then take action on that basis.
Thank you. councillor Harrington.
Just a very quick question. If members of the public took notice of the Operation Snap initiative and they actually had some video evidence on their car or whatever, would they be able to, even though we don't have a registration plate or anything else for those individuals, is it still worth them uploading that information?
Yes, I'm glad you referenced that actually. And of course, Vision Zero collectively is part of our response to some of these safety concerns that have been raised. And Operation Snap nationally is really useful means for anybody that sees bad driving, whether it's videoed by mobile phone, clearly not whilst driving, or on the dash cams etcetera, then they can feed that into us. We risk assess, we assess everything that comes into us and we'll take appropriate action wherever we can.
councillor Dowson.
Councillor Galton's already suggested, rather than go into it in any great detail now, I would suggest we perhaps look at this as a future standalone item.
Thank you. councillor Hannon.
Thank you very much Chair. Under the theme of antisocial behaviour, there's a big issue around noise nuisance, in particular some areas across the city where the public don't have confidence in terms of reporting the noise nuisance because of the response time. Can officers look into reviewing that in terms of how we can be more effective and in a position to send our officers to deal with that noise nuisance within a time limit rather than we'll get back to you? Because there's been a lot of incidents in the last few weeks where there's been house parties and people that are running the house parties on social media said, we can do this because the council can't do anything. And that is a bit of an embarrassment as a council that we feel that there's no power for us to do anything. I think the response time, I think can the officers look into that in terms of how can we be more effective? As you know, there was a big incident in LS6 and there was 400 partygoers, partying till about two o'clock in the morning and the police turned up. The police said, well, we can't do anything, it's a council matter. And by the time the council turned up, you know, it was one of those things, who does what? But I think that really needs to be looked into and it's very important that we can reassure the public that we are dealing with it there and then, rather than, I don't know who's doing with, who's going to deal with what.
councillor McCluskey.
Just to add to that, certainly in the outer areas, we don't get any response now. The out-of-our services has been closed and so people are just not bothering to report it. They'll report it to the police, the police will prioritise what they can, but we're just getting no response now to parties. Okay.
councillor Cunningham, were you wanting to join in?
Yeah, just to affirm that, thanks Chair, that my own personal experience of having to attempt to use the out-of-ours and social behaviour noise service versus contacting the police for situations in the past few weeks has been really, really varied and lacking in response.
Okay, thank you. Given that this, we have a general enforcement theme as, in response to the antisocial behaviour discussion, that might be something that they might want to focus on at our next meeting in July, when a lot of the crime-related subject matter is officially due to be brought to us and we can ask for further information on these areas for that meeting. councillor Farley, you in agreement?
My point was going to be around Leeds Watch and use of Leeds Watch cameras and greater accessibility to deploy the cameras, but also how those cameras are then used. Because one of the chief frustrations that people have is stuff happens, there is a camera there and then it's, well, okay, well, it's evident and then you get a response, well, we can't access this. So it's basically how can the council police and other council services basically work more closely together in order to share footage? I mean, I'm looking at John at the moment because we've got a lot of issues around like fly tipping, for example, which in my view is a form of antisocial behaviour. So just one for the future.
Yeah, so that's something that you can, what's the word, get the information together for us and repeat back maybe in July. Great. I'm just aware that we're in the performance monitoring and we have yet to get on to bins and we've used a lot of our time. So shall we now move on to councillor Hague?
Yeah, I'd just like to look at the hate crime section and welcome the What Makes Us Different Makes Us Leeds campaign that's recently been run. I think that's really positive. But to ask, I think the report addresses antisemitism, anti-muslim prejudice, misogyny, violence against women and girls. But to ask, I think we're seeing an increase worldwide, nationally, locally in homophobia and transphobia and what are we taking, what actions are we taking to address that? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks councillor. Yeah, I think the first thing I would say about this is that our approach is to hate crime is very, very cognisant of the fact that what's reported isn't necessarily what's happening out in our communities. Clearly we are reporting an increase in hate crime and a lot of that increase relates to anti-muslim prejudice and antisemitism for reasons we probably all can understand. But the key issue really is what's really happening in our communities and how can we get to a place where regardless really of background, status, ethnicity, that everybody can live in this city free of fear, any form of discrimination or indeed hate. The strategic approach to this focuses on five kind of key areas, starting with building up an understanding of what's happening in our communities and the statistics only paint part of that picture. So the key thing for us in the work that we do, again in partnership, is recognising the issues that you're flagging and others under the wider hate crime banner and then focusing through our operational activity on bringing that strategy to life in effect. There's a lot of work going on in each of the kind of key priorities. Again, in terms of detail around those specific areas of hate, I don't have them to hand, but more than happy to pick up with you in more detail specifically on the issues that you flag, because the information is there for us. I was more kind of focused today on the kind of citywide approach to hate crime and how we are addressing issues for everybody really who's experiencing it. I don't know councillor Galton, if you...
I think we're happy to have the information sent to us after this meeting. Thank you very much. And of course, last year we did do a proper deeper look at hate crime and we can follow up again as part of our work programme, how the recommendations of that investigation have been followed up since then. Okay, so we still have reducing homelessness, this was another area where we were very lucky to have direct access to the service to get a better understanding of how it works. Do we have any questions on this area for Kerry? councillor Cunningham.
Thanks Chair. Thanks for the report. I'd just like to ask, I think it's another question that I've raised at a previous scrutiny. Do we have any updated figures on the actual number of rough sleepers and street homeless that we have in Leeds and a bit more information about the pathways there and whether or not the figures that are presented take into account the number of people who are sofa surfing and as well? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Also Kerry, if you have any highlights following on from our visit and the report that we had, that would be really useful for you to offer at this point.
Councillor Galton, I think it might be helpful if, bearing in mind the nature of that question, if Kerry and I do a bit of a double response to that. The specific issue around rough sleeping is one that my service has oversight of, although works really closely in that multi-agency way with Kerry's and social work and other services. We have a really good picture of the rough sleeping situation in the city, principally through our street support arrangements, which is the multi-agency team that we set up a couple of years ago, recognising the fact that colleagues need to work ever closer together on an issue such as rough sleeping, principally because of the usual complex high needs that present with individuals who see that they have no other option but to sleep on the streets. Our approach includes outreach and therapeutic support. We link in very closely with external agencies, as you would expect, such as for instance, colleagues at Forward Leeds. And in terms of the intelligence picture, we undertake monthly street counts and we base our activity in terms of the street count on the intelligence that we've got from our outreach work. So we pretty much know where the common areas are where individuals are sleeping, be that in the city centre or in some of our suburbs, and all of those areas are picked up. And through the count, there is then some further, as you would expect, engagement activity and problem-solving work done in terms of how we might help and support individuals to effectively stop rough sleeping, principally because of the dangers that are associated with people who do rough sleep and the fact that, for instance, they are targeted by organised crime groups and that type of thing. So it's a really good picture, it's a really intensive piece of work. It doesn't include in terms of the numbers, those who might be in inverted commas, sofa surfing, that's not what we do, we're looking at people on the street. And there's probably a lot of information that I could provide, probably not relevant for this meeting, about what that position looks like now, other than to say that this very morning, oh yeah, actually it might have been yesterday morning, we did our most recent street count. So it's as regular and as frequent as I've described. That's the rough sleeping kind of perspective and response. I don't know if you want to address the other points.
Thank you Paul, I think you did address them in your answer, but I'm happy to just go across the headlines of the homelessness report, if that's okay. So I think the key points to pull out from the report for us are that the service continues to see increasing demand quarter-on-quarter. We're getting around 1,500 contacts a week at the moment, so we're incredibly busy. But despite the challenge, we continue to do incredibly well, achieving high prevention outcomes, last year at 76%, which of course is well above the national average. I think the three focus areas for us is, number one is around maintaining, but also improving on our prevention, how we can improve on our upstream prevention so that we have the best possible chance of resolving a person's homelessness threat as early as possible. So an awful lot of the work we're doing at the moment is around how can we get even better at preventing homelessness through upstream prevention. I think the second one, recognition that our TA figure has increased, it is higher. We have managed to stabilise that over the last few months. However, I think what we really need to be focusing on is how we increase the variety of temporary accommodation that we've got in the city, that the standards are good, that the variation is citywide, so households have more choice, but also that it's more cost-effective, so it's not putting a burden, a budget burden on the council. So a lot of the work that we've done around the market sounding exercises is really pulling out some fantastic opportunities for us to increase on that, on those temporary accommodation models. And I think finally, accessing to the private rented sector was always our biggest prevention tool and we need to continue to focus on that and grow the private rented sector scheme through the work that we're doing with landlords. And the market sounding exercise has actually opened the doors to conversations with individuals and companies that we haven't indeed spoken with before. So I think there are going to be lots of opportunities in future for us to really grow and expand on that scheme for families who are threatened or indeed homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Farley, did you want to come in?
Thank you Chair. I think there's probably quite a larger conversation to be had about homelessness in Leeds. You know, it's very multifaceted, there's a lot of different challenges and a lot of interconnectivity. You know, I mean, I see Paul has just left before I ask my difficult questions, but you know, part of the challenge we've got especially around rough sleeping is that rough sleepers are basically moved out of the city centre, they're then coming into wards around the city centre. We're seeing it in my ward in Bermsdovds and Richmond Hill, I'm sure colleagues from Beeston Holbeck see similar, same in Armley. And that's bringing a lot of the challenges that are seen traditionally in the city centre outwards. There's also a conversation to be had about, how can we, how can we help people to prepare for homelessness? Section 21 evictions, basically put people in limbo, they've got a few weeks to get ready. So I don't necessarily want an answer at this point, but I think it would be something for the committee to consider at a later date and have a really broad conversation about this, if that's agreeable with everybody.
Yes, it might be a useful continuation because previously we were looking at the front door, weren't we, in terms of homelessness mostly in our previous visit and this might be an interesting addition to that knowledge. councillor Lennox, she wanted to come in?
Thank you. I just briefly wanted to point out that the government's progressing at pace now with the Renters Reform, Renters Rights Bill as it's called now as well, which seeks to deal with Section 21 evictions and close the loopholes by which people can be evicted through no fault or evicted at, you know, at very short notice through that mechanism, which is extremely welcome because I think Kerry will agree that the number of Section 21 evictions that has increased, that housing options have seen has increased massively over the last couple of years. So we could come back later in the year at the appropriate point with more of a discussion of what actually comes out of that legislation once it's passed and what that looks like for us in Leeds.
councillor Dowson.
Yeah, just a quick thank you to housing as well because I'm Leeds Armed Forces Champion and housing do a particularly sterling job of work. We have dedicated housing officers and at the front door, I'm sure it happens most of the time, but it would be quite nice to embed the campaign that we have, have you ever served? Because people who have served can be 16 as well as 80 and 90. Because people who have served can be 16 as well as 80 and 90 and so on. So it's really important. But there's also reports of a disproportionate number of former service personnel being homeless. And the figures that I get sometimes don't bear that out. So it'd be quite nice, again, when we bring this back to look briefly, because I know it's only one section of the homelessness crisis that the country has, if we could look at that, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on into the other items around housing. We have information around the number of voids, update on dampen mould and tenant satisfaction. Are we happy to have a quick update from Mr Gore?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, my bit really quickly on voids, I guess. Board members are well aware that it's been a high priority for us over a number of years to reduce void levels down towards the 1% target. March 24, we were getting there, and for a number of months now, we've sustained performance around that 1%. It does fluctuate, but it goes below and above, and we're confident now that we're at a level that we can sustain. That's the headline, I guess, in terms of void performance.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to customer contact centre. Lee? Oh, I beg your pardon. We haven't covered tenant satisfaction.
Okay, thank you. So the tenant satisfaction measures, if you remember, these are the 22 measures that we must report to the regulator of social housing, made up of 12 measures that we complete via a tenant survey and 10 are management indicators. So we are in the process of finalising our year-end performance for 2024/25. The performance that has been shared with you is provisional. We have, over the course of the last few weeks, been working on finalising the performance, and there have been some changes to the final performance that will be reported. And that's as a result of some manual adjustments that we have to do, where the measure is, the data is collected elsewhere within the local authority. But also, we do ask internal audit to audit our figures, and they have identified some data that has been missed from some of the returns. So proposing, if it's okay with you, Chair, that we reissue this appendix for the purposes of the board? I would say it's slight variations in percentiles, it's not a fundamental change in performance. So just to give that reassurance to the board. I suppose the overall picture is that customer satisfaction remained the same for the last financial year, and there were some variations around the remaining indicators. So some of our performance improved, and other areas, the performance deteriorated. We take this performance really seriously. This is the basis that we're regulated by the regulator of social housing, and we've got an awful lot of actions that are happening to strengthen our performance. I think there is benchmarking information that is now also available, and we have been benchmarking ourselves against the reported figures from the 23/24 year. And generally, our performance is around that median, when you compare yours with other local authorities. But some performance indicators were better, where we're in that sort of second quartile, and others were in that third quartile. But generally, our performance is fairly average for a local authority landlord. I suppose to say at a positive end, we have just concluded our first quarter's tenant satisfaction survey via the survey with customers, and we have seen a significant improvement in that first quarter of the year. So, yeah, promising start to the year. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Hague?
Thank you very much. It's a big service and with many different properties and styles of properties, and it's a challenging job to keep on top of all of them. So I think we are doing well there in terms of serving our tenants. But my question is, when is a complaint not a complaint? Because our own tenants seem not sure, many of them saying they had made a complaint, but it was not classed as a complaint by the time it got into our processes. That's the item on page 75. Only 10% of people who'd said they had made a complaint in the survey had actually made a complaint, but they obviously felt they'd made a complaint. So I'm not quite sure how that works.
I think it's not always clear, and I think many tenants contact us, and they might use the word complaint, but actually, it's the first time they've contacted us about the issue. So in that situation, I think it isn't always clear what isn't a complaint. I think if people start through the complaints process, then we will deal with it as a complaint. But we deal with an awful lot of customer inquiries, and we seek to resolve them quickly and at the first point of contact, and that will always be our stance on that. So that's why I think that there is that perception, that customers feel that they maybe have to chase an issue rather than it formally being raised as a complaint.
Yeah, and that's often the point at which we become involved as board councillors. But is there, I think there is perhaps a communication, it's mentioned in the talk, you know, a communication issue there, that saying there's a problem with my property isn't a complaint in terms of when you're doing the survey? Because what the complaint is, is about the service they receive, not the fact that something's gone wrong in the property. Is that correct?
We've been doing some work with a consultant around the design of our web pages, and also, I guess, as part of our business processes. And I think it's been interesting, the discussion that we've had with that consultant. And we have come to a conclusion that we need to design our web pages in such a way that it provides that kind of information, so people know what to do, so that we're really clear and have a dedicated part of each webpage that is, what do you do if you not received the service that you expect? Or the service that we've made a commitment to make, hiring the webpage? But I think it isn't realistic to deal with everything as a complaint. I think it's, the request is, if you've not received the service that you expected or is outlined here on this webpage, give us a call and we'll resolve the issue as quickly as we can. It's the approach. So very much trying to strengthen our communication via our web pages and our service processes.
Councillor Lennox?
Yeah, thank you. I just thought it'd be helpful for members to understand as well that these tenant satisfaction measures, while they're given scrutiny here, are also scrutinised by tenant representatives as well on the Leeds Housing Board, which we held on Tuesday. And we had a very similar discussion about communication and it was related to online reporting, actually, of issues, but it was a very similar discussion. So just to give members assurance that this is discussed directly with tenant representatives throughout the year as well. So we have that conversation with users of those services and people who live in our properties as well, which informs all of the way that we take this approach.
Thank you. Lee, is the consultancy work, which has just been referred to, associated with the transformation work that you're also doing on customer contact, which you will be bringing to scrutiny board, won't you, later in the year?
Not this particular piece of consultancy, but the work from it is feeding into this programme.
Did you want to introduce your section?
Yes, certainly. So I'll cover all the customer contact performance and the welfare and benefits indicators, if that's all right. So I think presenting these against a challenging environment, both in terms of customers and, but also in terms of the, sort of inside the organisation, in terms of financial resource constraints, et cetera. So I think broadly speaking, the performance has been maintained. I think the contact centre is probably the one area where average B to answer has gone in the, has gone up. But it's quarter four this year compared to quarter four last year, we've had an additional 24,000 phone calls over those three months. And that's largely in council tax service and has continued actually in quarter one of this year. And the reason behind that, principally, there are three things. One, in changing legislation around sort of empty homes, et cetera. There's, the new payroll system has meant we don't, staff who previously paid council tax through their payroll, that hasn't happened anymore. So we've had a lot of staff owners to get arrangements sorted out. And also, the number of, we've had levers, both in the contact centre and in the council tax service within Strating Resources, which has led to backlogs. We are on that one. We are, we have employed in the contact centre eight additional staff, which is the first time that we've employed staff for about 18 months in the contact centre. They all started at the beginning of June, they've all been trained on council tax. We've also done cross-skilling, more cross-skilling. So we had a team working on housing issues over the winter, now that's sort of dropped off, we've got them working on council tax. So we expect to see average B to answer get back to some sort of normality over this year. In terms of the other areas, broadly positive. Job shop work, there's been a slight decrease in joiners, it's only very slight, but there's been an increase in outcomes, so the people who come to the job shop who actually get a job at the end of it has gone up, which is very positive. In terms of welfare and benefits, obviously, there's been the continued move to use universal credit, which is where the housing benefit moves across to DWP for them to manage as part of the universal credit process. That puts, that's putting demand on us as a service in terms of managing that, but we've done that. And our average speed to, average processing speed for claims, both new and changes, is really good when compared to core cities, so much so that DWP are coming up to Leeds, they're sending a team up to Leeds in, I think it's September, to work with us on, to try and find out why we are good at what we do. And also a positive there, we've done quite a lot of work around pension credit with partners across the city. And just within the welfare and benefits service, we've got 195 pensioners signed up at an average of an additional £80 per week of pension credit on that. Just finally, welfare rights, slight reduction in those assisted, but the benefit gain has been maintained. So that service is still bringing in about £28 million a year in terms of additional benefit by working with customers, which is a very positive thing. So happy to take any more questions.
Thanks, Lee. On a specific point, at the bottom of page 62, it talks about housing benefit subsidy for people in supported accommodation, where you talk about an improvement in performance because the growth in our subsidy is slowing down, but it's still going up each year to the point where it's 7.3 million pounds that we're having to subsidise the accommodation for people in supported accommodation because the government isn't. Is there anything that scrutiny can do to help you resolve that situation, given the council's finances we could do without paying out 7 million quid that we don't necessarily need to?
I genuinely wish there was. So this is a national issue, obviously, it's not just an issue specific to Leeds. I mean, there's lots of lobbying. We do a lot of stuff locally through the various groups that we're involved with, regionally, nationally, to try and get DWP to accept this. So this brought, for members broadly speaking, when people are in supported accommodation and receiving supported accommodation, so they're getting help over and above just the housing costs, then if that is in, not in registered provider housing, then we can only claim 60% subsidy back, so we have to pay the additional 40. And that's gone up significantly over the few, and again, it's a national issue, it's not just Leeds. What we've been able to do through making sure that actually the supported accommodation is appropriate supported accommodation, and the extra care that's being provided is right, we've been able to slow the growth. You're absolutely right, councillor Goldson, it is still going up, but it was going up at something like 30 odd percent a year, it's now down to 5% because of the work that we're doing, but it is going up. I mean, any help we could give would be good in terms of writing or anything like that. But like I say, it is absolutely at the top of local government issues in terms of welfare and benefits with government.
Thank you. Councillor Lennox, she wanted to come in? Can you let us know whether or not you're aware of any campaign by the Local Government Association, for instance, if this is a national issue, to get this resolved?
I believe there are Local Government Association campaigns, and I believe that they're working alongside other campaign groups such as Generation Rents, and this is a national conversation around housing benefit levels. And I think it really tracks across to other conversations that we've had in this room and in other rooms about the definition of affordable housing and the role of social housing, and the role of what rent levels are, how they are dealt with, if they are controlled or capped in any way. So I'd be really happy to meet with Chair and other officers to look at writing a letter to this effect, explaining the impact it's having in Leeds and what we believe some of the solutions could be. I believe, as I say, it's a national conversation about raising the housing benefit level. There's a lot of conversations at the minute about the National Benefits Bill, but there should be some symbiosis in this, that there are powers and levers that national and local governments have that could reach a balance here, but it will require some sort of real talk about the actual affordability of affordable housing for people. So happy to take it away and meet up separately to discuss.
Thank you, that's appreciated. Councillor Hague?
Thank you. And it's on the volume of calls, and you've described we're doing a piece of work to modernise our systems and make them more user-friendly so people don't have to phone the council, but it does seem quite alarming to have such an increase when people's preferred methods are generally not to need to phone the council because it's time-consuming for everybody. So I suppose in the interim, is there something we're missing in terms of why are people phoning rather than using the website? Or is it going to have to wait for this piece of work to be done?
Yeah. We already know that most people who call us are on, probably go online before they ring us. And similar to what other manly mentioned before about work on the website, part of it is, you know, the way that people navigate the website, we need to make it easier for people to make, and hence the transformation work that was approved yesterday at the exec board, that's, the focus of that is very much on that, because we know that, as you say, people will look online doing that. I think some of the call, you know, we have significantly reduced calls over a number of years because of digitisation of certain services. I think the call increases that we've, are a direct result of some key changes. But equally, some of those, you think we could be better online, we could be better online, like staff sorting out their council tax and things, you think we should be better at that? And that's what we're, the part of the programme that we are obviously looking, looking to do. I mean, we've introduced things like call back and stuff like that, so that people are not sat waiting that we'll ring them back. And so we do everything that we can in the context of what we've got. The new Genesis telephony system that came in last year helps a lot, and there's lots of things in there that we can look at, which we are looking at as part of this broader programme of change. But there is no quick fix. And if there are issues that, like legislation changes, then there will always be a focus, I suppose, in increased telephone calls.
Councillor Dowson?
It hasn't been mentioned yet, and I'm a bit surprised because it comes up at corporate governance and audit quite a lot, AI. So how, and personally, I like speaking to a real person, so I can absolutely understand people's frustration at AI. But it does help in a lot of circumstances, speed things up, and I know you've got a big turnover of staff at the call centre and so on and so forth. How are you implementing AI? And how do you feel that will actually help improve your service?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I mean, there are a number of projects that IDS are leading on in terms of AI, because there's lots of like pilots testing out different things. I can, obviously, we are keen to get those sort of AI- I can, obviously, we are keen to get those sort of A I assistants on the website, because obviously when people have that sort of more discursive, you know, they can ask it questions and it'll give them answers. It's an advancement on a what's called a chatbot because they're rule governed, whereas the A I, it can be more of a conversation, I suppose, and it refines it. And there's some of the things that have been piloted. So just as an example, we've put an A I assistant on the Money Information Centre website. So you can go on there and you can ask it questions around, you know, food support or debt fuel advice, et cetera. And you and you can, and it'll bring back from the website relevant information with the links for you to go on. And you can actually do that in your own lang, you can talk to that in your own, if English isn't your native language, you can talk to it in your own language and it'll give you answers back in your language as well. So that that's a pilot, and it's a six-week pilot whilst I D S learn from it and it'll come back. So there's a number of pilots going on, but A I is in terms of that broader transformation, it is a key part and as a tool that would sit on the website to help people get to where they need to get to, it will be really good. So it is definitely a tool that we are looking at.
And we can get more information on that when you bring the transformation paper to the board. Okay, thanks very much. We're now going to go back to the nothing goes to waste and delivering a clean and welcoming city section in the performance monitoring, over to John Wilmer to introduce the data which is in there.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, focus on the nothing goes to waste section. You'll find that's on page forty seven with a further breakdown on page sixty seven, appendix two, which is probably the most useful document to look at. Just a few quick points and then obviously open up to questions. The headline in terms of making sure nothing goes to waste is that ninety nine point eighty percent of all household waste managed by the council is either reused, recycled, composted or used to create energy. So in Leeds, only naught point two percent goes to landfill, that's what the figure's telling you. The data is for the full calendar year twenty twenty four and compares it to twenty twenty three. So the positive effects of introducing glass recycling begin to be shown in the figures, but bear in mind that's only from August twenty twenty four, so we should expect a full year effect in the figures you'll get for this year later. So far, though, in the figures in twenty twenty five show the further increases happening in terms of the amount of glass bin recycled through the green bins as residents get more used to doing this and as publicity and communications continues. For example, last month, over fourteen hundred tonnes of glass was recycled from these households, and eighty four percent of that glass has been remelted into new bottles and jars within Yorkshire. So that's good to hear, I'm sure you'll agree. This equates to seventy five percent more glass now being recycled in Leeds compared to this time last year before the Glass in the Green Bin initiative was introduced. And we're still getting, for those of you that are interested, two hundred and eighty tonnes of glass a month from bottle banks, so they're still proving their worth, albeit to a lesser degree. Just as a point of note, in May, the council worked, working with H W Martin, earned second place and a highly commended recognition at the National Awards for Excellence in Recycling and Waste Management. This was in the category for the best local authority recycling initiative. We continue to work with and get support from the industry representative body, British Glass, as well. We'll bring a full year evaluation of this approach to glass recycling to scrutiny later in the year, and we'll also cover recycling reuse at our household waste sites in the report being prepared for scrutiny. Although it's not fully covered in the performance reports and figures prior to the year, we have introduced in last year and this year further capacity improvements to the green bin recycling collections in Leeds as part of the three bin strategy for Leeds. This included ten thousand households moved last year to fortnightly recycling collections that previously only had a four weekly collection, together with a further twenty thousand households to that fortnightly collection this year. In addition, a further twenty thousand households in the areas of the greatest density population have seen their recycling collections increased to weekly from four weekly this year. This means that in twenty twenty five, the first time in Leeds, no household will receive recycling collection less frequent than every two weeks. As a result of all these improvements, the current recycling rate has risen to just over forty percent, which puts us in the top half of the core cities table. But in terms of future development, as with councils across the country, we await further detail following the spending review and whether any new burdens funding for food waste collection is to be included and will be provided to councils. There was no specific reference to this. There does, however, remain capacity for more to be recycled through the green bin in Leeds and further public engagement and communications will continue to educate and persuade people to recycle more in their green bin. We're currently undertaking annual composition analysis watching the Leeds green bins, which will help inform that. I'm quite happy, obviously, to share that with yourselves. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Do we have any questions on the bins and performance? Oh, I've got one. In terms of the glass collection, you've pointed out that we have the figures for a part-year collection of glass. Do we have any projections in terms of how a full-year collection of glass would make the percentage in total for the city?
Yes, we do, Chair. So what we do at the moment is we're logging, obviously, each month, the amount of tonnes of glass that are collected, both from the green bins but also continues to be collected in the bottle banks and tracking that. And I can, I'm quite happy to share that information, that logging, tracking information with members. So we're looking at the last three months of data and projecting that forward. We're looking at around sixteen thousand tonnes of glass to be collected through the green bins and and bottle banks out of a total of around twenty thousand glass that we believe is currently produced. The composition that the work's been done at the moment will verify how much is still left in the black bin, so we'll be able to provide a much better qualitative figure to you once we get that composition analysis back. But roughly speaking, fifteen or sixteen thousand tonnes of glass has now been collected in Leeds compared to around ten thousand before, nine, ten thousand before.
Sorry, the question was, what is the new forecast percentage of our waste which is recycled if you take into account a full year of glass collection?
So the, sorry, the overall recycling figure? Yeah. Around at the moment, we're predicting that to be around forty two percent.
Thank you. Now, we had a very useful visit to H W Martins, didn't we, to understand how the introduction of new kit could help enable the city to recycle more, which we very much appreciated. You've mentioned the prospect of food waste recycling, potentially through joint collection in the brown bin. Do we have a an identified potential processor for that recycling waste stream that we might potentially have another site visit arranged for?
We don't have anyone identified at the moment through the procurement process, Chair, so just very briefly, we have undertaken a procurement process recently to try and establish a contractor that could deliver combined food and garden waste collections through a new service that was introduced across the city. We were hoping to be able to procure someone that would mean that would be cost neutral exercise to us that wouldn't rely on the funding being provided by through the new burdens funding from government. That procurement exercise showed that that is not possible in terms of contracts out there that will deliver the costs we'd need for that. So we're at the moment going through and talking with those various contractors that either bid into that process or expressing an interest to understand what the market position is in regard to facilities and capacity going forward. So we're on with that work now, discussing that with them, and also revisiting and looking whether a separate food waste collection would therefore be more economic and better to deliver, although that would contradict our three bin strategy. So we're on with that work at the moment. So all of that shows us, what that does tell us and show us is that it is difficult to move forward in the food waste collection, whether it's separate or commingled, until we have that extra money confirmed by government. And that's the point I made in my summary, that the spending review made no direct reference to any of that new burdens funding, and councils across the country wait to understand what that means.
Thank you, John. When you referred to your summary, do you mean the one you've just verbally given, or is it somewhere in the paper here?
Sorry, just my verbal summary at the beginning.
Okay, yeah. So when will we get that in a report to scrutiny? Are you scheduled to bring something to us yet, or could we make it part of our work programme?
Specifically on food waste? Would you have to come back to you, I think, next, the next meeting on household waste sites and then around the glass recycling evaluation that I mentioned, I think, later in the year? I could broaden that glass recycling report into an update where we are on on other simpler recycling commitments like food waste.
Yes, thank you, that was really helpful. Councillor Rafik?
Yeah, just to add that, I think in terms of food waste, I don't think at the moment there's there's a great deal to, you know, if you're going to have a separate item on that, but I think there is obviously, as John said, in terms of, you know, overall recycling, you know, we could have a discussion on that.
Great, thank you. I think that brings our performance report to an end. So thank you for the officers that have maintained a marathon presence during the meeting. We appreciate your attention to us and we look forward to seeing you again for those areas that we'd like to develop into more enriched discussions at a later date. Thank you very much. So we'll move on to our next item, which I'm going to bring forward, the work programme item. So that members can identify. Oh, I beg your pardon, we've, there's a request for a comfort break. Well, I'll see you back here at twenty past. Welcome back, everybody. We're on to our next item of business, which is an update on the proposal for further selective licensing in the city, feedback on consultation. So the report updates members on the outcomes from the now expired Beeston and Hayhills selective licensing schemes, which we have had a previous report at last year, last political year. It also provides an update on the feedback received through the recent consultation on a proposed new scheme that the council may be taking forward. The consultation responses have been analysed by theme and will inform the business case for the proposed new scheme prior to that being presented to the executive board. And one of the recommendations, it's noted, from today's meeting may be that we ask that the business case for that proposed scheme comes back to the scrutiny board for further consideration. So we will need to formally do that at the end of the discussion if that's something we want to happen, because at the moment, the recommendation is just for us to note the contents of the report. Okay? So I'll start off by asking Mark Ireland to give us a background to the paper so that we can start our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. As you said, we came in February where we gave some feedback on the last two schemes in Beeston and Hayhills, and we said we would come back and talk about the outcome of the consultation which took place between September and December last year. Also come back with a number of issues that were raised at that meeting with responses to them. We've asked to look at rent levels compared to other areas which are in the table, one to three, we've looked at what we actually had available to us and what we. Sorry, apologies. Rent levels, we've gone and looked at comparable areas, we've gone and looked at what the rent levels actually were based on data that we held and compared it to the pre, what historical data we did have, not that there is much available to go back and and look at it. Conclusion that we've come to is that there aren't any evidence to suggest that selective licensing has an adverse effect on on average city levels compared to other areas. We've looked at the fee income, the report has table nine shows the income that was generated, the spend against the income as was requested by the board. We've looked at what other selective licensing schemes across the city, sorry, across the country have compared to the ones that we have and propose. The webpages for those and what they are and the licence fees are on table ten. They show that there is actually no consistency around the country as to what level of fee is, what they charge, or what the discounts are proposed for any licence scheme offered by local authorities. Vast majority of schemes have a two-part fee as we do. Vast majority of schemes have a two-part fee as we do and it's paid in the two halves. One, when the application is made, and the second part prior to the issuing of the licence, as we have done in Beeston. The proposal confirms that we're looking at two fees, one online for applications, one on paper. The differential is basically due to the additional cost to the council for handling the processing of paper licence compared to the online version, because the applicant puts most of that detail into the computer, which we don't need to do. When we've looked at what happened last time, beginning of the scheme, roughly two-thirds were paper, one-third were online. We're now receiving online applications at around eighty percent. In terms of the value for money, we've detailed not just the money that we, as a service, have put into it. We've tried to look at what benefits might have been to the local economy based on the works that we're asked to do. Anecdotally, we've been told by local traders that, for example, during Covid, the work that was asked to be done on properties made a difference to their ability to survive. There's details in the paper around Clearhall build, not that we're taking credit for that being solely down to selective licensing, but as was in the report previously, from comments made by Inspector Nichols who led on that, the contribution that was made and was recognised and the difference it's made to Hairhills as a result. We talked about last time Operation Base End, which was coming to a... which was going to the Crown Court. That has now resulted in three out of the four managing agents being given custodial sentences. That's a result of a twelve-month operation between ourselves and the police. That not just removed millions of pounds of cannabis from the city, but also we're looking now at the eighty-nine properties that were identified and making sure they are not returning to the... for criminal use and that they are now provided for as homes. The judge recognising the summing up the impact that that activity has on the private rental sector and the removal of homes from it. Colleagues in public health have retrospectively looked at benefits from the... from, excuse me, from housing and the interventions and how the benefits to health could be quantified. As part of Marmot City, we're looking at how we can develop that further and how we can look at the impact and work out the benefits of the interventions, not... and if selective licensing is approved, include that in terms of the work we do in the private rental sector and the potential health outcomes and benefits of that intervention. In terms of the loss of homes, we've re-looked at those properties that we had previously licensed that were either revoked or for whatever reason the owner sold, moved on. Of all the licensed properties that were there, four hundred and ninety-seven, all of them were relicensed. We don't say that all landlords didn't remain in the market. We make no bones about the fact, for example, that as part of the activity to improve the quality of housing, we ended up bankrupting one managing agent for the failure to comply with their legal requirements. In terms of the feedback, the report covers, as did the one in February, details of what was actually undertaken. The main feedback we received was online questionnaires, one that was for residents, one for stakeholder and stakeholders, one for landlords and managing agents. We've now had the opportunity to analyse those. In terms of the questionnaires, we got two hundred and eighty-two, one-eight-nine responses, eighteen-eighty from residents, three oh-nine from landlords. We also got over six thousand nine hundred individual comments, all of which have had to be analysed, looked at, and we've put into various themes which are on the background papers with the responses to those matters that we have, as a council, responded to as required to do. We are happy to provide a copy of all the comments that we received, if you wish, as a board, but it runs to about five hundred pages. Colleagues in the intelligence and policy unit kindly looked at the feedback. As you would expect, not everyone is for, not everyone is against, and that's within each stakeholder group. In terms of landlords, validation raised no concerns. Eighty-four percent of respondents either owned or managed a property in the proposed area, and while seventeen percent of the respondents agreed with the proposal, the vast majority, two-thirds of them, did not. Main issues raised by landlords and managing agents was the licence fee and its level and its structure, the boundary especially around the city centre and Riverside new developments, the fact that it would be targeting good landlords where properties were deemed to be compliant, the failure to address previous issues in the previous scheme, and there were mixed views on the proposed area and the size of it from obviously not doing it through to the fact that some thought it should be citywide and some thought the area should be smaller. In terms of the residents' feedback, colleagues raised concerns when analysing it around some of the responses. We received multiple VPN responses, which was out of step with similar consultations.
Mark, can you clarify what a VPN is and why it's significant?
Sorry, yes. VPN is a mechanism by which you can respond to a questionnaire, as it is in this case, but be able to hide who you are by going through, I suppose the best way is remote service. So I can sit here on my computer through a VPN and I can... it can look as if I'm coming in and responding from America or another country or somewhere else in the world. It basically is a tool to potentially hide your identity. There's nothing wrong with using it, and we have had VPNs for all of the questionnaires that we've had in the... sorry, consultations we had in response in the city. The issue with this particular consultation is the pattern and use of the VPN. What that has shown is that there are significant numbers, and you'll see on the heat map on page eighty-seven, linked to Leeds eleven postcodes. When you analyse the pattern, and again, these are in the paper, between eighty-seven and ninety, there is a difference between those people who have a single VPN or a single IP address compared to those who have used a VPN. Time taken doesn't match up. There is a contin... the patterns of the time and then the continual same postcode is of concern. The languages that are being used, that have been translated into, don't match those that are based from the GP data that we have and seem to be in alphabetical order. Some of them, we've had some very interesting song lyrics which we've had to translate. There is the potential that it is a single individual, given the pattern at which these have been responded to. That is the opinion of colleagues in intelligence and policy who do this on a far more regular basis than we do. So, it's raised concerns. And as a result of that, talking to those colleagues and talking to legal, the paper highlights the responses from residents into four groups. Everybody who's responded regardless of what... whether they're multiple, single or they're part of ACON, those with a single IP address. Those with multiple IP addresses and ACON themselves who undertook their own survey. So, the results are different. If you look at all responses, forty percent agree, fifty-six percent disagree. So that's the hundred... that's the one thousand eight hundred and eighty responses. If you look at single IP addresses, we've got just under seventy percent agreeing, twenty-two percent disagreeing, that's seven hundred and ninety-six responses. Multiple IP addresses where they've used the VPN, one percent agree, ninety-eight percent disagree. We did look at analysing that data in, as we did in the previous Beeston case, looking at two to five, six and above, but it made absolutely no difference. So we've just reported it as two or more. And then ACON, who undertook their own survey based on ours, which was a hundred and eighty-eight, was a hundred percent agree with the proposal. In terms of the things that have come out of the consultation, obviously there's concerns about rent increases, the works that are required, again, issues around the proposed boundary, especially around the city centre and Riverside area, the need to hold landlords to account. Again, mixed views on the area and size of the scheme, some around the boundary, some of it thought should be citywide, some of it smaller, and then obviously the fear of eviction as a result of us introducing it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was well articulated. Do we have any questions around different areas of the report? councillor Farley?
Thank you Chair, and thank you for this report, Mark. I'm particularly enjoying these sort of like Saddam Hussein-style responses, where you've got, I think ninety-nine percent of respondents in Group C, ninety-eight percent of respondents in Group C said that they weren't concerned about the condition of housing in these areas, which is patently absurd. My question therefore is, given that this is clearly an attempt by people to, if not corrupt the process, at least misdirect our response to the process, are we... are we just... are we... are officers proposing that we just ignore this data because it's not... it's clearly false? Is that the legal guidance?
We will present the data as it is in there, once we've finished going through it in the final business case, as we did with the one in Beeston. It is not our job to, as officers, to make a decision on the data. It's our job to present that data for the council to make its decision based on the business... the full business case, including that that you've got being presented with today.
Thank you. Yes, I think we can concentrate more on the more sophisticated responses to the proposal in terms of the consultation, because there's plenty of that. And if you look at page one-one-three, that starts listing the cumulative reports in terms of the response according to themes, beginning with responses from landlords and agents. And then later on, page one-six-one, it talks about resident and stakeholder feedback as well. So one of the issues that we can look at therefore is the... not just the numbers in terms of opposition or support, it's more about the issues that are supported or opposed. So one of the things that interests me, for instance, as Chair, is the arguments around fairness of the fee. So, and that... and hopefully that's one of the questions which is looked at first of all in the report. So we have had complaints from landlords, for instance, which are being subject to the scheme, which say our fee is, I think, the highest in the country, or one of the highest. And we have quite a firm position in terms of that fee being paid upfront in total for a five-year period, whereas other authorities have either lower fees or they allow a payment method which allows instalments. So I was interested to see the response to that, but I didn't really see anything in the response which said anything other than, well, we've got to cover our costs and that's why we've decided to do it the way we are. So, the question I would ask in terms of being devil's advocate is, is it a chicken and egg situation? So, do you say the fees have got to cover the cost of the administration of the scheme? Do you start with looking at a reasonable fee and then cutting the scheme to the cloth that that provides, or do you say, how much does it cost to have the team that we want and then set the fee according to that? Does that make sense? Thank you. Councillor Lennox?
Sorry. I mean, I'll let Mark come back and explain more thoroughly the resourcing of the scheme. But we... over the course of this, we have had conversations about the fee. It has been one of the main responses that has come back, and it's something that Mark and the team have looked at and said, actually, with changing the way that this is run and resourced, we can bring the fee down, and that has happened as part of the proposals for the new scheme. And that was something that came out of the initial round of consultation and has been something that we've discussed. So it has been... it has not been disregarded, and it has been something that's come through in the consultation and has then led to conversations about that fee and about how it can be managed with regards to the resource that's needed to administer the scheme.
Thank you Chair. We break the process down and work out how much each element of the process actually costs. So if you look at the first part of the fee, which is to administer the licence, we break down the process by, if you like, how long it takes each part of that. We work out what the cost per hour of that officer to do that part of the role is, and we build the cost up. We don't work it backwards, we work it the other way. So we work out roughly, well, based on experience, how much time something will take us to do, and that calculates that part of the fee. We do a similar thing with the second part of the fee, how long, how much someone should contribute towards the compliance element of it. If we were to work backwards, then we would work out on a higher fee, because we would actually need more staff, so we don't do that. If we were to include things... if we were to work backwards, then I probably need double-sized the team and charge twice the licence fee. We don't do it that way. I'm aware of the local authorities do, we don't. We work out, for example, the cost of the first one plus the on costs, so how much it would cost the local authority, and that gives us the first part of the fee. We don't say, we need twenty officers to do this, therefore it's going to be five hundred quid. We work it out that way. When we've looked at the actual fee that we charged last time and compare it to this time, it is actually basically in line with inflation.
Thank you very much. Will that go into a little bit more detail in the business case?
Yes.
Can I just also, on the point of the fee, on page one-six-one, just to highlight to the meeting, the fee equates to two hundred and twenty pounds per year over the five years for an online application, which is, you know, if landlords have multiple properties, obviously that applies to each individual property. But two hundred and twenty pounds a year for the licence which allows them to be compliant and allows them to have the contact with the council to prove that their properties are compliant and that their tenants are living in safe and compliant homes, is, I would have said, reasonable and in line with other schemes across the country, as has been evidenced.
Thank you. I think the point that was made by those that do object is that they're not charged two hundred and twenty a year, they're charged upfront one lump sum. So, it's just about payment method, isn't it? Okay, so I've raised that issue, which I thought was pertinent. Are there any others that you wish to raise with the content which is in the paper? Which I have to say is at a very high level in terms of the content which is the comments, but also the response that the council is giving officially in writing, which we don't usually have for this kind of report. Any further comments? Councillor Cunningham?
Thanks Chair. I'd just like to dig in a little bit into the measurable outcomes. So, being supportive of a scheme that raises standards and holds landlords to account, I can understand from the scheme the individual improvements potentially within the properties, but I can't necessarily see the correlation between some of the claims about the measurable outcomes within the communities. I say that in relation to perhaps the scheme being rolled out to parts of Armley in that the areas that are being looked at are also areas that because of their levels of deprivation have much more input from our community teams, from our environmental teams, potentially from police teams in Leodis, that will all contribute towards that. from police teams in Leodis, that will all contribute towards that. So that's one of, that's one of the points really. And just to also question whether there's any degree of lobbying to central government about how the payments from the selective licensing are actually used, and whether they can be used for improvements within the local community. Thank you.
In terms of selective licensing, the primary purpose is to address housing standards, and that is the reason for introducing it, and that is the contribution, the primary contribution that the scheme makes towards addressing deprivation. The secondary element of it, which is more difficult to measure, and I think it's something we need to look at if it is brought in, how we would do that, is that it does help working in a partnership, working with our community teams, working with the police, address wider issues of criminality, as I said in the last meeting in February. If I'd sat here and told you I was going to find five hundred and fifty cannabis farms in the selective licensing area, most people in this room would have laughed at me, but that's what we did, and we've contributed to criminality. Yes, it's the police's primary objective, but without that, for example, base end and working in a partnership way, using some of the powers that we have under selective licensing, then there wouldn't have been the outcome that we achieved. There isn't another local authority that works that way that's had managing agents jailed for facilitating the production of drugs. And, you know, clear whole bill, if you speak to Inspector Nichols, he will say the same. We're not taking credit that that is the primary purpose. The primary purpose of selective licensing is to cross the threshold, make a difference to people's homes, but that allows us to work in that partnership way, to bring other partners in to address some of the individual needs of people, which we've highlighted in the report, and addressing other, you know, other issues of deprivation as a result.
Thanks Mark. councillor Lennox.
I think as well, something to not forget here, that there's, it's not simply the criminality, and removing that criminality from communities that makes the difference here. We all know as members, and we know through our casework and through the work we do in our communities, the levels of deprivation that we see in some of our communities, and when, you cannot overstate how terrible some of these properties are that are in some of these areas. You cannot, they're indescribably poor quality, they are unsafe gas and electric systems, plumbing issues, windows, doors, sealants around windows and doors, doors that don't lock, no internal doors, open holes in flooring, unsafe staircases, all sorts of things. And this is where our residents are living, this is, these are properties that our residents are paying to live in. We have these powers to be able to get over the threshold and inspect them, and we know that a safe and secure and warm, you know, home is crucial for health outcomes, and crucial for attainment outcomes as well for young people. We know that children sleeping in overcrowded, damp, unsafe conditions are not going to attain as well at school, their attendance is affected, we know that health is affected, damp and mould, that we, we as a landlord are obligated and are regulated to have robust action plans on. We are regulated to a far higher standard than private landlords are, and we also have all of the work that we've done on the Marmot City Agenda. The highest authority in the country, the Institute of Health Equity, highlights our approach to selective licensing as one of our strengths in reducing the gap when it comes to health inequalities in the city, and we've got, it is in the paper, but it's also something that I think members can, I mean, imagine that the properties in your ward, should you be able to get, that we know are problem properties, we all know that there are properties that are of concern to the neighbours, that attract issues, if we were able to get over the threshold and then use the powers to create safer homes, and create more regulation, and more oversight of the way that those homes are being run and people are being charged to live in them, then we can eliminate some of that inequality.
Thank you. councillor Farley.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I was just going to come back on both Mark's point, and actually now councillor Lennox's point. As a councillor for one of these areas, you know, it has been remarkable how much of a difference it's made with regards to antisocial behaviour, you know, taking out those properties that are being used for drug growth and distribution, you know, it's not just the criminality of it, but it's also the sort of behaviours that that then attracts to those areas, that then has a knock-on impact on other residents. And I know, kind of speaking to a lot of my residents, it has been very clear that even among owner-occupiers living near to or next door to properties that just look unsafe, it adds a level of reassurance to know that, kind of, the gas and the electric is all, you know, up to scratch. So, yeah, it's more of a comment, and I'd just like to say, I welcome all of this work that's taken place, I think, you know, we know it makes a difference, and hopefully we can see this go forwards.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with councillor Farley more. There's a huge difference between a house and a home. A house is somewhere you tolerate, you put up with until you can find somewhere better to live, and we've all, especially the inner-city councillors, have been in houses that we're ashamed to have in our city, even though they're not our houses, they belong to other people, but we've got very vulnerable people who are living in those houses, who as a council we really should be protecting. And unfortunately, you've got the good landlords and the bad landlords, but you've got areas, I mean councillor Lennox knows this, my area isn't affected, I would absolutely love it if this legislation was brought in across the whole city. There's a huge economy of scale there, and I don't know whether it would be possible to do that, because you have outlying houses all over the city that would actually fall, it does sort of stigmatise certain areas unfortunately, and I think a good move would to have everything within the city boundary covered by it. But there are, it's the outcomes, and I'd refer everybody to page 214, which has the impacts of housing on health inequalities, and it goes through asthma, and we've got coming in, we were talking about it in the break, we've got AABs law coming in in October twenty-five, around that tragic incident of damp that caused death. You know, we have a responsibility as a council to make sure all our residents are protected and looked after, and you just have to go down this, you know, winter deaths, respiratory diseases, mental health, trips, falls, sleep, you've got attainment in education, you know, it affects our health service, it affects our education system, so poor housing affects nearly everything we do in the city, and I think that the sooner personally that we can, we can get this sorted out, the better. So that was more of a comment than a question Chair, I do apologise.
You are allowed councillor Dowson, we're here for reflection as well as challenge. councillor Lennox.
Thank you. I think councillor Dowson just reminded me to make another point regarding outcomes, and regarding what these powers have allowed us to do for reducing inequality. Getting over the threshold doesn't always just mean looking at the quality of the house, it also allows us to refer to other partners, in whether that's children's social services, adult social services, schools, other organisations internally and externally, you know, who can, who can support people, as has been mentioned, who are some of the more vulnerable people in our, in our communities, sometimes ones living in the kind of properties that we're talking about. And also just to reinforce the very basic sort of theory that was mentioned, it's an old-fashioned term, but the broken window effect of when there's a property or a clutch of properties in an area which are unmaintained, are rundown, are used for criminality, that's extremely hard to live in that community and not be affected by that. It's a cumulative set of effects and benefits that we can evidence, and has been evidenced in the report, the impact it has, and the government is looking at this legislation, this legislation will come off the back of the Renters' Rights Bill about, and we hear that there are discussions about expanding the powers, that's not something that we can include in this current discussion, but I think it's widely recognised nationally the powers, the impact these powers can have.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, can I, can I ask a question in terms of, there's been much talk about the very worst that can happen in private sector accommodation, but we already had a conversation earlier in the meeting as well around homelessness, where we're hoping to develop a better relationship with private sector landlords, to enable them to help us with pressures that we have around homelessness. How can such a selective licensing scheme aim to enable landlords to thrive in a private sector market, and deliver the benefits of good accommodation? How are we able to add value to their business model through this scheme?
We have the landlord letting scheme, that we encourage landlords to become part of. That is a scheme by which we will work with the private rented sector to discharge our duty to provide homes, well, provide homes through the private rented sector with an offer of support with bonds, with rent, with damaged liability. It's something that we promote, probably one-to-one with landlords when we're out and about, especially if landlords are struggling with their business model, and it allows us to engage with them, it allows us to work with them to improve their property, but it also allows us to support the tenant and the landlord with finance, and I don't know if you want to add to that Kerry.
Thank you Mark. So the private sector landlord scheme is really well established, and just as Mark mentioned there, we do have things like rent guarantee, we will match households with landlords, we'll do, we'll have like an evict alert, where if landlords are having issues with their tenants, we can, you know, get in early and support landlords, making sure that, you know, if households are working, that they know how to pay their rent, if they're claiming benefits, that we get everything set up in advance. So I think, just going on from what Mark was saying, we have very much recognised with the rent, sorry, with the private sector scheme, that we offer landlords as much support as we offer the tenants, so that we can make sure that those tenancies are sustained, which all, which suits the business model of a landlord, but also it supports households to be in accommodation long-term.
Okay, thank you. And would that be emphasised in more detail when the business model that you're going to propose comes back, if we wish to have a look at it pre-decision?
If you wish to understand it better and provide the details, yes, we can include that.
I think that will be useful. Are members happy with that? Yeah, so we'll add that as a recommendation going forward. Right, thank you very much, that brings the conclusion to the paper. councillor Lennox.
Thank you. I just wanted to say in the meeting, thanks to Mark and the whole of the PRS team, as well as the colleagues in housing and health who've supported bringing this very comprehensive report together, and I think, I hope the board feels that we agreed to come back here to look at more detail about the consultation and what the themes and outcomes were, and I really think that's been presented really well to us, so thank you both, and the rest of the team very much, because it's really been helpful.
Thank you, and we appreciate the effort that's gone into the compilation of that report, so that actually the discussion ends up being shorter, because a lot of our answers have already been, sorry, all of our questions have been answered already in the text available in the report itself. So thank you very much, and thank you for everybody in your attendance. Oh councillor Hague, yes, we didn't do the work programme, did we? I beg your pardon. That's the comfort break for you.
Oh, brilliant.
Okay, sorry, so the work programme, so with the recommendation in that paper, we're going to have the business case coming back to us. We had a discussion around PSPOs, didn't we? And in terms of electric bikes and crime involving vehicles, and issues around youth antisocial behaviour, which doesn't necessarily have to be a separate piece of work, but can be something which is, is included in greater detail in the crime reporting that we're going to get later in the year. Was there anything else which I have missed that we suggested at the time? councillor Farley.
I'm not sure if it ties into what you've described there, but I think something about Leeds Watch, and the use of cameras and observation methods more generally, and how that integrates across the council and with other partners. And then second point was homelessness, and taking that slightly wider view on homelessness across the city, kind of what's happening, both in terms of rough sleeping, but also what we're doing at housing level, kind of basically preparing people who are about to enter homelessness, and then supporting them throughout that process.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think that means that I'll have to get into discussion, because one is around how do we enforce more effectively through better connectivity between agencies with the assets that we already have, and then the other one is the next steps in homelessness, so it's all right identifying how homelessness is approached at the front door, but it's how is it then resolved through the later process? Yeah. Yep. councillor Hague.
All right, in thinking, at the February meeting, we'll be looking at the food waste item, as well as the evaluation of the co-collection of dry recyclers.
Yes, just to clarify that, he was going to include that within the reporting back on the glass, wasn't he? But I would like to see a visit to something to do with food waste, even if the council hasn't concluded its procurement options on that, to see how others do it.
I think that might be useful, it'd be perhaps useful to understand if we're looking at aerobic or anaerobic digesters, and where that is taking place. I know Welling Gloucestershire, but it's a little far. And can we also get some understanding, given there was a reference to perhaps having to not, not being able to use the three bin system, as to where there are costs and savings in that, so for example, many households in Leeds don't, and won't have a garden waste bin, so they would have had to be provided with a different bin. You can understand where I'm coming from, I think, that we just need to understand what the differences are, and also what the funding opportunities are.
Yes, and I think part of that is down to the government rules around what they will subsidise and what they won't, and at the moment it is strictly weekly food waste collection, and association with a different stream which is delivered at a different frequency doesn't fit the bill. We do have a pilot which lasted for over a decade in my ward for food waste collection, so that might be something that we might actually finally get an evaluation of potentially through asking the question. But thank you for that councillor Hague, that was very helpful. So, thank you very much for your attendance, and we've noted that for the work programme, and that will become the first item at the next meeting. Thank you very much.